... And we have some middle school people here to give us a presentation pretty soon, so I've asked Diane if she won't be there in the front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, there is, before we approve the agenda, the council has the old agenda, and on the back of the agenda, it had some plaques to be reviewed on the new business, that is not on the final agenda that everybody else got except the council when you got it early, so that's pulled off of the agenda. And I think we've got two more plunge volunteers that needed to be added on here.
Um...
Do you have that?
They're... they're in the back.
Oh, okay. You have a motion to approve the agenda.
Uh-huh.
The second.
Motion the second. Discussion or questions? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Close no. And the minutes of the February eighteenth meeting, I think Georgia, you said you had your change to the minutes?
Yeah, I felt like we needed to add a little bit on to communications from the public on the last paragraph there, and the word that Tim Tesh had given, and the others included that they requested a form, the council to form a code of ethics, and the others were including that, and that was not approved.
Okay. Let's get that, baby. Okay? So with that change, we'll have a motion to approve the minutes. So, motion the second, discussion of questions? Any other changes? We have a motion the second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. And the current claims, the bills in between are a hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty cents. Do I have a motion to approve them?
No.
Second. Motion the second, discussion of questions? We have a motion the second, all approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. And the current claims in the amount of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine forty-one fifty-nine, do I have a motion to approve them?
Some...
Second. Got a motion the second on the current claims. Any discussion or questions on these claims?
I've got a couple of questions on them.
Okay.
We bought some self-etching primer from, I think, Kimball Company. I don't know what more it is on these bills, because I go through the bills and city... But anyway, uh, paid eleven forty-nine for a can, and we bought the same can downtown, which one ounce less for seven dollars. I mean, we're shopping local, we're saving money, so... And I asked Carly to talk to, uh, Street Shop, but he hasn't had time yet, but I think we need to start checking out prices in town before we buy out of town.
That was at Kimball Midwest?
Yeah. And I see, is the golf course paid off this year?
I think there's one more payment.
Wasn't this year?
Yeah.
That's all I need, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the current claims? We have a motion the second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. I guess you're ready. Communication from the public on the crossing guards from the middle school student body.
Good evening, we're the Hot Springs Middle School Student Council, and we're here to talk to you about crossing guard. I'm Dawn Miller, and I'm the eighth grade president, and the members will now introduce me.
I'm Jay Seawood, I'm the eighth grade secretary.
I'm Ray Atkinson, I'm the eighth grade CEO.
Um, I'm Charlie Burton, I'm the eighth grade vice president.
I'm the sixth grade secretary.
I'm Janice, and this is the eighth grade president.
I'm Jessica Miller, and I'm the eighth grade teacher.
And I'm Kelvin Harris, the seventh grade secretary.
Alright, this is a letter that we received from a concerned citizen. Hi, dear Principal Fitzgerald, I am writing this letter to you out of great concern. I ask for the safety of our students. I am Kelvin Harris, who's in seventh grade, and Kayden Harris, who's in third grade. Grandmother, I have picked up Kelly and Caitlin many times after school, throughout the years. I've always noticed the bottleneck of cars' kids in the parking lot exit by the sixth grade door. Last Thursday I arrived early to pick them up and parked by, parked right down by that exit. Parking lot still had a layer of slippery ice and snow. As I sat there and watched, the high school students driving cars would signal the younger students to go ahead and cross in front of them, thinking they had the power to stop. In one instance, a middle school student had to put his hands on the hood of the car to avoid getting hit by the skating car. The car was barely moving and it was not intentional, but nonetheless, it was out of control. I wanted to jump out and start directing everyone, but with no authority to do that, I quickly grabbed my kids and left. I realize this has been a problem for years, and we have been so blessed not to have any serious injuries. I'm also wondering if we could get some cross guards out there. All schools have at least student cross guards. I talked to Kelvin about this, and he said the middle school student council was working on a fundraising project to get the equipment. This is about money, please buy the equipment and send me the bill. Thank you for any response to this, as safety for our students needs to continue to be one of our top priorities. Sincerely, Bev Harris.
Um, this is how much we know about the school safety patrol. The American Automobile Association helped organize schools' patrols in the nineteen twenties to get older students to help younger ones cross the street and get to school safely. Today, more than six hundred thousand students are on the safety patrol, and thirty-two thousand elementary or middle schools, middle schools. Our safety patrol pledge: Report for duty on time, perform my duties faithfully, obey my teachers and officers of the patrol, and report dangerous students' practices. Um, our safety patrol ranks are, um, well, students can be, can apply or be selected for leadership position within the patrol, including captains, who sidepost and monitor other patrols, lieutenants, who assist the captains and fill in for absent patrol members, and sergeants, who maintain the patrol bulletin board and manage the equipment inventory. Uh, the patrol badges will reflect patrolers' ranks. Um, some famous past patrol members are former presidents Phil Carter and Phil Clinton. Oh, Jimmy Carter.
Our crossing guard mission statement: Job of safety patrol is done for the purpose of assisting students crossing at busy roadways to and from school in safe and orderly manner, and communicating observations and/or incidents for may, for may impact the general well-being of students. Central functions: Communicate school policies and enforcement procedures to students, personnel, and visitors for the purposes of ensuring their understanding of potential consequences of violation. Stop students at intersections for the purpose of providing safe access to and from school. Stops traffic as necessary for the purpose of providing right-of-way and ensuring the safety of students and other pedestrians. Our knowledge is required to perform, understand random procedures, write routine documents, and speak clearly. And I understand multi-step written and oral instructions. Specific knowledge requires, required to satisfactorily perform the functions of the job includes safety, practices, and procedures.
Um, who and where things will be. Um, we'll need stop signs right down here by this little island right there on each side. And we'll also, um, need one near, need the, near the gravel parking lot. Um, we'll need the words painted "stop" on each side of the island also. Um, and we'll have six crossing guards around the area, two here, two here, and two here. We may change that to four, we don't know.
And, alright, and the cost of equipment, we went over this with City Hall before. Vest, or six at ten dollars each, which would be a total of sixty dollars. Paint around a hundred dollars. Posts, three at fifty-four dollars each, total a hundred and sixty-two dollars. School children pedestrian sign, five for a hundred dollars. School crossing guard kits, three at a hundred and fifty-eight dollars, total of four hundred and seventy-four dollars. And which, did we bring our, uh, kit? No, alright. Altogether, total price would be nine hundred dollars.
Uh, thanks for your time, uh, and consideration from the Hot Springs Middle School Student Council. If you have any questions?
I have a question. Has this been taken to the Board of Education?
Not yet. Uh, next Monday night's, the meeting will present then.
Is it, is it their responsibility to oversee this?
Not necessarily, no. It would be the crossing guard supervisors. Uh, we're also looking for parent volunteers. I have four or five already that would be out there assisting the kids, helping the other kids cross back and forth. Are you asking for a cost-sharing program? The city does part, like for the stop signs and some of that, and some from the school board?
Um, we went to City Hall, and they said that we pretty much think that they're gonna pay for it, but they're gonna try and buy signs out of the old warehouse.
Val Henry with the...
Val?
Hope you tell me. We, we have all the equipment and, um, the signs, the, what's that shape? Crossing guard signs, the, the green ones, they wanted the lime green ones. We have them purchased. Just wait for them to get here, and then, if I'm understanding right, you said the city would still install and go and cover the posts and stuff?
Yep.
And then all the equipment, the vests, the cones, the stop slow signs.
The vests, the cones, the signs, and then those other signs.
Yep, we have all that covered. Those costs covered.
We're asking the city, if it's on city property, we understand some of it's school property when you get on that side of the street towards us there. Um, we'd be responsible for that, our maintenance department can put that in, but across the street in the gravel parking lot, I'd like to sign up there on both sides. So I was asking the city if their maintenance crew could put that metal post in there for us. So it's a collaboration through the city and the school, uh, for the safety of the kids. And, uh, I've had nothing but very positive responses from everybody, and Val is, and her gracious kindness is gonna pay for almost all the equipment, so we don't have to take it out of our middle school budget through the student council.
And the highway patrol, um, I'm not sure yet, but we've talked to them about, uh, providing a training in-house so that these guys can train kids, you know, as they're shifting grades and everything else, that can keep them trained and everything, proper safety. We, we took all the, um, advice from Chief Evans, who wanted a five-point breakaway vest and everything for the kids, and we've got those vests, which were not quite as cheap as those ones, but we were able to get them, and so we've, we've taken a lot of tips from other people that things they wanted, and tried to make it where they wanted them. You guys at the public safety meeting?
I'd personally like to thank Val for what she's done. Pretty good job, Val, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, will the kids that are involved in these programs get any extra curricular credits for this? Uh, well, they can probably get some recognition. This will definitely be the first time this initiative has come through this city, um, and, and through the school district. Uh, this group of middle school student council kids that you see before you here will be the first ones. Um, we've been planning this and talking about it all year. We hope to have it started sometime in April, depending on how fast the stuff gets in, the equipment gets in. And, um, you know, they, it, it's a leadership role that we're gonna establish within the middle school, and it's gonna be a badge of honor to be on the crossing guard. So that's the recognition that you get there, and then they can look back and say, you know, especially this group here, we were the first ones to do that and provide that safety guard. Um, you have all the high school students being dismissed, driving their cars, and, of course, we tell them not to text, but they do. Um, and you have middle school students crossing, they're going to the bus loading zone, which is in front of the Bison Center. And then you have elementary kids coming across whose parents work either at the middle school or the high school. Um, so we've got kids going everywhere there. Um, and it's about an eight-minute window that, after about those eight minutes, it's, it's cleared out. But there have been some kind of touchy situations out there.
Like in the letter, I was there with my grandma when that happened. Yeah, he was crossing the street, and she waved him and kind of drove forward a little bit and hit a path of ice and kind of slid.
Slid.
Yeah, then I put his hands on it to stop it, and he was too scared of it.
So we're wanting the South Dakota Highway Patrol to come down and train us, um, so that we know exactly what to do when we step on them. Definitely a good program. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks again for being here. Next agenda item is a report on the tourism summit, and I think Scott's gonna give us, give the council an update.
Okay. I'm just gonna kind of give you a timeline of, uh, where we came about this tourism summit group. Uh, I don't think I need the mic, can everybody hear me? Alright. Uh, we first met, first met with Secretary of Tourism Jim Hagan, and Black Hills Flag Bad Mountain Lake, and Black Hill Central Reservation, just discussing what we could do to increase tourism in Hot Springs. Uh, so this was our first initial meeting with them, and after that meeting, uh, we had talked about, uh, there's been, uh, seven or eight groups kind of doing their own things in Hot Springs, trying to improve Hot Springs. So we just wanted to bring all these groups together, find out, uh, if there's some common themes. So on November twenty-first, we had, uh, Nor Johnson, Cindy Donnell, uh, interviewed, uh, these eight to ten groups, and there were some common themes that came out of these meetings, and I've got those listed on there for you on the front page. Um, but we've met three other times since then, uh, with all, with all these, uh, included in this group is, is our hotels, restaurants, uh, you know, attractions, anything like that. So we've met as a group five different times, working on strategic plans to help Hot Springs. And, uh, our big goal right now, uh, is, you know, is to make Hot Springs the number one vacation destination in the upper Midwest region. And our goal is to increase tourism by a true thirty percent by 2016. Uh, again, we're all working together to try to benefit Hot Springs, and some of these goals we have on there are short-term. Some of them are long-range goals, that are gonna be multi-year projects that, uh, are gonna cost more. But everything we're trying to do is to increase tourism and increase sales tax here in Hot Springs. So some of these, uh, you know, things that we're looking at is identify the springs and meet the brand promise of Hot Springs. Uh, develop a marketing strategy, a comprehensive marketing overhaul, fix-up, clean-up downtown, development for Hot Springs, a map project and signage, a trail development map showing biking, walking, and hiking trails in and around Hot Springs. Events focused on events that will keep people overnight, parks and recreation, the, uh, you know, department, a river redevelopment project, and then economic development. Um, so I'd like to bring Nor Johnson up, who's, uh, kind of met with all these groups, and, uh, I'll let him, uh, you know, speak a little bit on this, so go ahead.
Alright, thanks for having me, and I really, anybody that's been involved with that group, if you could quick wave your hand or stand up, because there's a bunch of them here right now that, that have participated. Um, I, oh, yeah, yup, but, um, my role in this, in this group really is just to kind of facilitate meetings and help them organize spots, and I've had some experience at it, in my life privately with the Schwan Food Company, and then, um, I also was a city council person for ten years, so I know every, I know what's going on in your chairs when you have these things, uh, happen in your community. And I'd also share that, um, that this group coming together, and that includes, um, we had representative from city administration, shedco, the Chamber of Commerce, the bid board, we had some event specialists, business investors, um, the Recreation Center interest group, um, tourism interest groups, including, um, attractions and lodging and restaurants, and then the Vision Twenty Twenty group, all at the table. Um, that's pretty positive when you get a group like that together to, uh, start making plans and, and putting some things, uh, in place to help improve your economy and improve the, especially in South Dakota and western South Dakota, tourism is the number two industry, and it's important to be involved. Um, so, now I'm gonna share with you kind of the process that I walked these folks through, so that you're aware of how we're coming to the conclusions with our goals and some of the different things we're up to. Really, uh, we sat down and did our interviews with the different groups, and they all described separately, well, these are our goals. And, um, and if that's really coming up with the brand promise, which you'll hear this group talk about a lot, one of the frustrating things for the people servicing tourism in town is you have an implied brand promise that there's hot springs. So when people get here, it's, where's, where's the hot springs? And, uh, so one of the things, again, that was a common theme. So one of the things that this group is coming up with for a plan is, how do we identify the hot springs, create the hot springs, divert from the hot springs, which I don't think would be a good idea, but somehow you need to find a way to answer that question and include that into your branding and into your marketing processes. So we came up with several of those goals, and those are really what you have on the list. Call them concerns, call them projects, call them goals. At the end of the day, they're items of common concern between the groups. Um, so each of those have been addressed, it's started to be addressed so far with some strategies. What things can we do to help sort of start to accomplish those goals? And from there, the work doesn't stop there, and that's where this group is gonna set themselves apart from others who you talk to, because they're spending the time to start talking about, what are the action items then? We wanna, we wanna fix something, and we've got a strategy to do it, I mean, right down to who's making a phone call on which day to who. I mean, they're really going about that kind of work to make sure that these strategies are accomplished that support some of the goals that are going on. And I'll, I'll briefly share one quick example, and I'll reserve myself for any questions you may have. Um, really, so, uh, so our first goal of meeting the brand promise, that's one we talked about, and that one's right at the top of the, at the top of the list. So, one of the strategies behind meeting a brand promise is you really need to know what people are expecting, right? If you're, uh, that the Krispy Kreme company, people are expecting Krispy Kremes, right? Your hot springs, people are expecting hot springs, but what does that mean? So, the group decided to put together a survey. Best way to find something out, what do you want? Well, I'll ask you. You know, what's, what's your pleasure? So they conducted a survey, it's a two-phase survey, and that, that was, a lot of discussion took place to make sure that we had these two phases. The first phase was a local survey. They've already had a hundred and fifty-three responses to that survey, which I gotta tell you, I mean, you could be in a town of twenty-five thousand people, and to get a hundred and fifty-three people to respond to a survey would be good. So there's really good interest in being involved, and this information's coming back in. And now, there'll be a second rollout of that survey, um, to another important group, and that's your visitors or potential visitors. So the survey's gonna go out probably in the next couple of weeks, you think, Scott?
Actually, in the next week.
Okay, so next week, so that'll go out to them, and what they'll do with that information, you have actually some of the results, right, in the handout?
For the, for the local survey, yeah.
For, for the local survey, and now we'll blend that with the surveys that come back from the visitors, so that really, when you start talking about, well, what should we, how should we develop our tourism product, you're gonna know what to develop it to, and you're gonna have some good solid substance and evidence behind that. So that's, so as far as the process goes, we, we took that meeting, the brand promise, to a strategy of doing a survey, and then right down to who's doing the questions for the survey, who's getting the mailing list together, who's gonna compile it, and that work has been accomplished already, and in really a very short period of time, we've got some good steam up behind that. Uh, what you'll see from this group is, uh, is a continuance of this. Um, they're, they're gonna come to you with, uh, with information and responses and requests for partnerships, and I, I would just share with you candidly that when you've got a, a group of, of this caliber, that's with this kind of passion, getting together, doing their work in an organized fashion such as this, you could, you can pay a lot of money to have another company come in and take care of the business like this. Tens of thousands of dollars to get the kind of information that this group is coming up with. And if this, what they're coming up with is gonna be just as good. So, uh, again, I'll, I'll step back. Thank you for your time, and I'll reserve myself for any questions you may have.
Another thing is, we would like to, I guess, set up a working meeting between city council, I don't know if you wanna make a, you know, a three or four-team board, or if we could sit down with all of you and kind of go through the strategic plans in a more detailed fashion. I just kind of gave you an overview or bullet points of what, uh, what we're looking at, but we'd like to sit down with you. It was the last council meeting, you know, that was the first time I'd ever heard about the, the park planning thing, that, you know, that could be incorporated into this, that, uh, so we need to work together to figure this out, and again, it's, it's to benefit Hot Springs. So if we can get together within the next two weeks, uh, we would like to do that, so, um, if you've got any questions or if we can work out some, some dates, or, you know, uh, please let us know.
Would you rather meet, like, late afternoon, Scott? Some of the council...
Whatever, you know, if, if we have to meet several times, or whether, I mean, I just, we wanna make sure that we're sharing you the information, and we can get the information you guys are looking at, you know, back and forth, so...
Do you anticipate, excuse me, do you anticipate a long meeting, a little bit?
The first one would probably be a longer one, because we have, you know, like, nine action steps, unless we just go through the, you know, top five or something, and then we begin to go the other time. I mean, if, if, we just wanna get together and be an open book and say, this is what we're looking at doing, and this is our timelines, and...
Right. Well, let's do it, and I, and I think if we can, we'll try to set up a meeting. Maybe if the whole council's involved, it would be easier to go through it one time, that way you don't have second-hand information. The ones that can make it, make it, and if somebody can't make it, they aren't there.
And we'll have notes from them and everything, from the council, so...
Should we try to set up a meeting now with the council, or do you want us to try to do it by email? What's the council's feeling? Do we meet, like, at six o'clock some night, six-thirty? I was gonna say five, and that way we're forced to be done sooner, but it might be a two-hour meeting.
It, it could be if we, if we go through a lot of...
Two hours will go fast, it's pretty, it's actually kind of energizing stuff that you're going through, so it'll, it'll get, it'll get to two hours in a hurry.
Let's say six.
Do it six o'clock, yeah.
Just so everybody has a chance to get home cleaned up before you leave, yeah? Six o'clock some evening? Is there a good evening for people? Might as well in the next, like, week, or maybe just ten days?
Soon, probably the better, it's fresh to everybody. Wednesdays aren't good.
Wow, I don't know Mondays, though.
Monday would be the only evening.
Monday night would be the only, can we do it next Monday night? Be the tenth? Let's try it next Monday night at six o'clock? And you wanna meet down here, or do you wanna meet at the city hall?
Let me go verify, I mean, we probably need to be here, because city hall's not gonna be large enough, if we have a big group. So, let me, let me run out and check the book real quick, make sure the tenth is okay.
Okay.
And, so let's tend to, we'll set it for that, maybe.
Good. We'll do it six o'clock on the tenth, unless you come right back and tell us if that worked.
Thank you. Is there any questions you want to ask, or?
Uh, I would only make one comment, and I might be able to make the meeting on the sixth, I have a previous engagement, but we just recently became the Veterans Town, and I understand it's hot springs and that's important. But you need to, in my opinion, include the fact that this is the Veterans Town, because it is also a tourism area to bring people here. It's important to our community, and you didn't mention that, so... I just think you should add that in to the, to the reality of what this town is, because more than anything else, we are veterans.
I'd agree, and I'll, I'll share that we had some, we really, we really opened this up broadly, to start with, especially with shedgo at the table and city admin, and, and talked about honestly things that were economic... things that were economic development in its entirety. And those things, they're at the table, and things that we've talked about, and it should, as we continue forward, I think that's a good notion to have as well. And really, if this were to be part of a, we tried to scant it to tourism to keep it manageable right now, but there are components of those strategies and those goals, and even the action items, that even though maybe we're doing it specifically with regard to the Veterans Hospital, they also make impact for tourism and vice versa. And there are also other components with regard to infrastructure that they're good for citizens, they're good for tourists, and they're good for the VA. So all these things fit together, and thanks for bringing that up, because actually, I think I was supposed to mention that last night, that we are doing more, I mean, the things that we're doing should affect more than just tourism. But, yeah, it's just that message.
Just in the spirit of what we did when we came up with the eight, nine items before, we assigned, you know, a stakeholder in that item, and so, you know, this is an area that was not brought up by the people that were interviewed, but, you know, I don't have a problem with that in a tense item, but we need to put an owner with it if we add it, so.
I'm not talking about the VA and the state home. Those are separate issues. You know, the reality is, if you look at this down, the greatest percentages of people per capita are veterans.
Right.
Or related to a veteran. I mean, I just think, and for tourism, why is it, and I won't be there Monday, but thank you.
And the conference room would be available?
Conference room?
Okay, yeah.
Conference room, conference room next Monday. Any other questions for Scott or for Nora? Okay, thank you very much.
I'm probably going to excuse myself from, I live in Sturgis, so I'm probably going to get up the road in a few minutes, but thanks again for your time.
Nora, thank you.
Thank you. Next writer is Code of Conduct, Mary.
Hi, I was at the last meeting, and I spoke out, so I looked up a few things and had an idea, found out we didn't have a code of conduct for our council, and I looked on the internet, and I couldn't find a city that really doesn't. We have the right of petition and peaceable assembly, the right of petition and the people peaceably to assemble, to consult for the common good, and make known their opinions and shall never be abridged. That is our rights, so I came up with a code of ethics. Sorry, I'm very nervous. We are neighbors. This is a small town, and that makes us all closer than others. I have been to a few city council meetings and do not feel welcome. Is that what we want for each other? We need to work together for the good of our town. That is why having rules such as these ethic rules will hopefully bring an air of civil workings and positive debates. As a voting member of the community, I am bringing forth this code in representation of myself and group of citizens who would like to see ethics brought forth for our own town. I ask that each division review these, and the council vote on them the next scheduled meeting. Being a leader isn't about, isn't just about ability, it's about responsibility. Look at the plunge. The people that stood up for the city to purchase it have taken the responsibility to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. This will be going to the different committees to review before the next meeting, and if anybody has any comments or suggestions with concern to it, they should let it be known before we go down this at the next meeting. Okay?
I'd like to add something, Don.
Okay.
You know, I guess it's one thing if you want to do a code of ethics, but, you know, I guess a lot of people don't realize, when you do this code of ethics, there's also a provision in there where you can take action against a councilperson just because you don't believe in their same view. To me, that's up to the citizen. If they want to take action against a councilperson, that's up to them. You want to talk about ethics, when you take the right away from a taxpayer, people that elect us, how unethical is that? I have no problem with playing nice with the council and the public, but when you try to give the council power to take action against one another, that's not a good government. That's for the taxpayer to decide.
If there's something that you feel should be changed or revised in that, then write it down and bring it before your council.
My question is, what is the ultimate goal of this ethics? Is it?
It's to, hopefully, as I said, to bring an air of civil workings and positive debates to where maybe we could discuss things in a more appropriate manner.
But, you know, when people vote no, it doesn't mean they're negative. There's also people on the other side of the fence that want us to vote no. When you have everybody vote yes all the time, that's not a good government.
I understand. We're not all going to agree. I understand that.
Okay, I was just kind of questioning the conduct and ethics. We've kind of had a problem with it here in the past, and...
Could you explain it? I don't understand what you're saying really. I mean, I understood the part about voting yes or no, and I think that's what you're here for. Hopefully, you do do yes or no.
That is correct.
But what was that last, what did you mean by that last statement? I haven't got the flip in front of me, so I don't know what you're referring to.
There's a little more with this code of ethics and conduct in a lot of places. It's not just about getting along with your fellow councilperson and the people in the public. There's also provisions to try to take action against one another, and that's not for this board to do.
I don't know what that means, that taking action against...
I guess I can't explain it to you, Mary. It's part of the provisions, some of the conduct and ethics.
Is that in there somewhere?
No.
I think what I heard her saying is not how you vote or don't vote, and this town disagrees a lot, and I disagree with a lot of my friends, my close friends, on a lot of issues, from the national level down to local, but it's the respect, I think, that we talk to each other in a civil manner, and we talk to one another in a civil manner. I think, is that what you mean?
Yes.
I haven't seen the paper, so I don't know what's on there.
Thanks. Do I have a question back there, too?
Nope.
That's all that I was going to say, was just, I don't think it has anything to do with the yes or no, because, yeah, you guys, that's why you argue it, because we all want to hear what each individual has, just showing respect for people as well as, you know, the fellow councilmembers. Doesn't mean you have to like everybody.
Okay, thanks. If the council has comments, or if you recommend changes or whatever, why don't you follow me through me instead of one of the committees, because I'm usually there, and I'll try to put something together, and I'll have all the comments in one place, and might be able to act on something we have to take more study, whatever. Thanks. Any other communications from the public?
If I may take a moment, please. I'd like to give an update. You want to hear me? I'd like to give you an update on where we are with honoring our heroes and bringing the wall here to town, because I'm pretty pleased with what we've been able to do for you. We'll start with July and what we have planned. The wall will arrive on the 30th of July in Chadron, and we'll once again bring it up and do a parade down to Centennial Park. Wall will be set up on the 31st. On the 1st of August, we have a tent coming to town with military equipment, weapons, I believe, clothes, et cetera, that'll be set up also in Centennial Park. The wall will come down on Sunday, and the Sturgis rally starts on Monday. So what we plan for the entire week following that is, with the city council commission, is to have a band each night in Centennial Park, which will be part of the event that we will put on for you. And along with that, we would like to put together a shuttle event, okay? And I don't know if we have anybody here from Edgemont, but actually, at the same time as we're doing the wall that weekend, we have the rodeo in Edgemont. So what we're going to do is we're going to provide a shuttle service from the hotels in town to Centennial Park, and then we're going to have at least one or two trips a day going down to Edgemont for the rodeo and back up here. And that way, we can tie the entire community together and make it a whole event and not make people have to pick and choose. Plus, if you provide the shuttle service, the bus service, then that'll mean that you're able to partake of liquid refreshment on either end and still be able to go down there in a positive manner. And not get hit up. But what we're trying to do this year is to make this, if you add the carnival, which is the week before, thanks to my coworker over here, she's got a carnival coming on the 25th. If you look at that event, we pretty well kept the Centennial Park active, drawing people into our community, starting from the 25th up through the 10th of August. Additionally, during this event, we're trying to put together a car show, a two-day car show in Centennial Park, because we'll have the room for it down there, and a number of other things. We'll have motorcycle games down there for the biker guys. But the point is, what I'm trying to bring across to the group here and let you know where we're at, because you entrusted us to do this for you, so we're trying to put together for you an event that brings people to our wonderful city, keeps them here. And I think if we use the shuttle service, they'll realize this is the place where they want to come to, that they can hang out at night and get back to their hotel and not have to worry about transporting themselves from one place to another. So we have a common goal and a common purpose, and I wish to guide from, yeah, to tourism. We all have been here, because this is the kind of event we need in our city that will bring people to the city and bring them back again, because, you know, those things happen. Are there any questions on any, yes, ma'am? I'm not going to do board passes.
I'd volunteer to drive the bus. I have a CDL.
Wonderful. Yeah, we're trying to showcase our community in a positive way. I think we can do that.
Not all the community, Southern Hills. I mean, you're trying to tie Edgemont, Hot Springs together, so it's Southern Hills.
Showcase the Southern Hills, not just Hot Springs.
Well, yes, and that's it, because we're going to Edgemont. Additionally, I didn't mention, for those of you that know that we do the motorcycle ride out of State Home, and that'll be on the 3rd of August, we're going to make one of the stops Edgemont, the last stop Edgemont before they come back here, which we've never done before, but with the rodeo going on there, that will be a good event for the end of the rodeo, that'd be a good way to tie them in. And I don't know why we didn't do that last year, but the intent is to do that this year, and that way the events don't conflict, you know? Any other questions? I'll sit down and call. Thank you for your support, city, because without you, I wouldn't have been able to do it.
Thank you, Don.
And my coworker Kim back here, who keeps me out of trouble.
If you guys weren't tireless, we wouldn't have these things happening, and we do appreciate what you do, really do, all of you. Any other communications from the public?
Mr. Mayor, Council, as you all know, I do events, and I've got one that I'm going to spill to you tonight. I'm working on an event. It's going to be a fitness expo for the year 2016. I'm looking at a four-day event, bringing in bikini competition, body, figure, strongman, arm wrestling. I'd like to, Scott touched base on, you know, trying to tie this community together. One, I'm trying to tie it together in a health mindset, atmosphere. I'd like to incorporate Evans Plunge somehow, some way. I'd like ideas on that. Maybe we can do a swim volleyball competition down there. With these events, this brings in people from all walks of life. Wrestling, I know for a fact I can pull in almost 800 competitors just in wrestling. This would be a drug-free competition via NPC, which is a natural physique competition entry level for your pro bodybuilders, pro wrestlers, pro arm wrestlers. I've got two professionals that I'm working with currently on the arm wrestling as well as the strongman competition. This will fill up our hotels from Hot Springs and beyond, maybe even Custer, Rapid City. I'd like to set up this event to be recognized in the state of South Dakota, where we have the whole, not Rapid City taken away, or Sturgis taken away, like they did with my mud run or my cover run. Again, it's something to tie the whole community together, working with the hospital where they can do the drug testing out there, as I've worked with the chamber on setting up, as well as the school, on the use of all the gymnasiums around here. I'd like the figure and bikini and bodybuilding and stuff to be done down here, as well as the school, the wrestling, fencing, I mean, there's a number of events that we can partake here. So again, I'm looking to try to hold, try to hold the community together. So any suggestions or input? I'm doing the groundwork. I'm currently putting together my A-Team, is what I'm calling them, so that they can, I can delegate and have the correct individuals to head this up, so.
So are you thinking of having this at the schools, or would you want to utilize this facility here?
All the facilities. All of them. A four-day event. The school with the wrestling, the grappling, the martial arts, I'm looking at fencing. Down here, the physique, bodybuilding, arm wrestling will be done up at the school, martial arts up at the school. I've got four gymnasiums up there to do life. I've got the gymnasium here. My challenge will be, you know, the advertising and stuff like that. I'll be doing a lot of traveling this year, just going to different competitions in Vegas. I was just out in Ohio, flew back Sunday, was not able to make it to the Arnold Schwarzenegger Classic. I'm looking at making this an annual event, not just at one time thing. People travel from state to state, from competition to competition. We've got a local gentleman here that actually qualified to go to the Arnold Classic, chose not to because his boy was in an arm wrestling, or I mean, wrestling competition, so, yeah, state wrestling. So, I mean, we've got those connections, and again, it's just the community working together and trying to help me. This is going to be the single largest event I've ever put together.
Like what month are you talking?
I don't know what dates, and that's the thing. I know the city and the community would ideally like it in the wintertime, when the hotels and stuff are down, but again, I'm working with, with this being an NPC entry level. Again, this is where people, beginners, come in and try to qualify for your big Arnold Schwarzenegger events and stuff like that. You can go down to Vegas and qualify. I'd like to be an entry level. Montana does it, Colorado does it, Iowa does it. We don't do that. So I want to make this the hotspot, just like the South Dakota. I don't want anybody to be able to come in and take this from us, so.
So what month are you looking at then?
I don't know.
Do they qualify? I mean, is it...
You can qualify at several different events. They hold these, these are international, they hold...
Any time of the year.
Any time of the year. To qualify to go to the Arnold, you have to qualify by the end of December. So, you know, I've got, the months I'm kind of playing with would be September to November, or, you know, later in the spring, right after the Arnold Classic. Most competitors take about an eight-week layoff after competing, then they start prepping for another competition.
They also look at when it's beautiful, it's still beautiful here in September. I don't know how many other events you compete with in September.
Well, there's like one-day events. Colorado's got an NPC entry level competition for bodybuilders, physique, stuff like that in May, you know, but that's a one-day event. I'm wanting to do a four-day event, where we're keeping people over, staying in hotels, stuff like that. The Arnold's a four-day event. There's a three-day event in Vegas for NPC entry level, so I think, I mean, we're safe to do a four-day event. You get people flying into Rapid, I don't know if people, you know... You get people flying into Rapid, I don't know if people, you know.
May and September could use business here, or June, July, and August were already pretty filled, so we still work here.
Well, those are all details I'm still working on. I've been working on this, we're probably like, oh, well, shoot, it's been in my mind for three years, and it's just, the cat's just getting out of bed, so after I've gotten all these other things under my belt, this is, this is my next tackle. So I'm just wanting to let you guys know what I'm working on. Any support from any organization or, you know, you guys as well, I just, I'd like to work with you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Starting to beat that, is there a location for the public?
Uh?
I forgot.
Don't forget to be a.
Continuing personnel, we've got items listed on your agenda. New business, we need to set a hearing on March 17th at 7:25 for an off-sale law members' license and wine license, and this will be for the All-Star, just opened. Motion by Carl to set the hearing, I have a second. Discussion and questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The county accepted low bid from Nelson's Oil for unleaded gasoline at $3.12 per gallon. Matt Fredell could not be here this evening, do we want to talk at all about the parks proposal?
Well, he called and he said if we want to talk to him, we can sure call him, but I guess, I told him, I guess we need to figure out if we want to move forward with this or not. I mean, there's, there's parts of it that we can, you know, like this citywide park system, I really, I feel that we, we should do that at the very least. You know, I've been told that if we don't have a plan in place, people just, they're not willing to buy into it, but once you have a master plan in place, then you can go after grants, and people are more eager to actually donate money towards a portion of something. I mean, so, I guess, I like told Matt, I guess tonight, I guess my main thing was is to see if we're all kind of on board with this or not.
I think we ought to go forward with it.
I'm certainly on board with it, but it's, it's a matter of cost at this point in time. Are we going to be able to afford it this year or put it in the budget for next year?
We do have some money available, I mean, we, you know, it just depends on how much of it we want to do, and I guess then the next thing to see is if people wanted to start contributing or donating for, you know.
Playground equipment, anything?
Well, or parts of other plans, or, you know, different, different areas, and they can hear Mark kind of what they want, but.
I talked to Matt also, and he said that he'd be willing to talk to us a little bit more about it, because like the tourism, you know, and how they want to have this incorporated into the whole plan, I think it probably needs a little bit more information for us.
Well, yes and no, I, you know, I keep hearing about this, this Parks Advisory Board, you know, they're wanting to throw the golf course, the parks, the plunge, everything under one committee, and that's, that's too much. I mean, you're asking a volunteer group to try to control all these things, when you, when you, you really should have different groups kind of focus on things. And that's where I, I really think we need to get this parks deal going, and then we can start adding things, but I, I just, I personally don't feel that the one, one advisory committee should be trying to oversee all of it, because it's just too much.
Each one of these departments has their own intricate problems, and I have to agree with you on that.
Yeah, I do too.
What the groups to specialize and take care of what we're putting in that.
One of the issues I had with Wes is it only covered a portion of the parks. It didn't do all the parks.
And, and just, we kind of just asked him, we kind of, kind of, he was feeling us out, and we were feeling him out, and we just, we kind of specifically asked him for different ones, ones that we thought, you know, that we could afford maybe this year or something. And I mean, he's willing to add to the plan or take away from the plan, and that's just something we can, we can decide, I guess, what we want to do, how much we want to throw towards it, and, but I, I definitely, I feel that we need this, that citywide park plan for sure, and then, I mean, the smaller parks, I guess, if groups want to come forth and try to figure out what the city wants for this, I mean, that's, that's entirely up to them, that's. Tonight, we need to get the, we need to get the ball rolling.
You think we should be looking at putting some budget together for this particular plan, you know, for the coming of next year, not just this year, but for next year?
We, like I said, we have some money, we could, we could get it started this year, and then we just, either unless, unless somebody wants to volunteer and donate a bunch of money, you know, there's a lot of civic groups, and they keep saying they have money, but until we have a plan in place, they're not willing to do anything, they're just, nobody wants to buy into it.
This first part is the, the system needs assessment, that looks at all the parks, does it also look at the freedom trim, you know, or is it just on parks?
It was basically just the parks, is all we kind of asked him at this point. Gerald, he actually was with him, is Gerald still here? Gerald actually went with him, and I actually kind of, Gerald, you can probably kind of explain this a little better, some of it.
Well, I, I think the first thing that we need to do is, we need to thank our mayor for all the work he's done for many years. I, I saw his file of all the letters that went to SDSU to try to get them to come out here, because the price was right. I mean, they were in training, so they would be the ones that would go all the way to the, to what we call the CAD drawings, but, you know, Matt's going to be charged probably a little bit extra on that, but, yes, Don, I think what we need to do is, is look at his needs assessment first, and then go from there. But, yeah, he's got, he's got it broken out where he's got specific parks, and each one of those parks has got a price tag to it, but if we get his needs assessment first, and then see where that's going. Because like Wes said, definitely there's people out there, there are civic groups that have money that are willing to invest if there's a plan.
Should we put this on the agenda next time and try to get, I'm sorry?
Would, would any of the needs meet, like, like with the tourism thing, you know, like, I don't know, I've seen parks with, if we're the veterans' town with airplanes in them, and, you know, I mean, are we looking at the, the full picture before we decide on what to do with the, with the parks?
Well, this man actually kind of, he holds public hearings, and then he has people come in and see what they want in the parks, and then he kind of starts to lay it out for us, but I mean.
Well, see, and I, we, we don't know what, what you're, you're voting on, or what any of this says, or, well, I don't know, I just, if we're going to obtain a focus in this town, like with this tourism thing, I, I hear nothing but positive with that, with that group, and if we're going to make this town a veterans' town and a hot springs, then shouldn't our parks show all that? I mean, do we want to just jump into something, or is there a plan made already, or?
It's really hard to get military stuff put in our parks, isn't it hard?
Well, just like swings that look like an airplane for kids, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to say a real airplane.
Well, the, the public will have a comment period when he puts on public comment, and I mean, they'll have a chance to tell him what they want, I mean.
I, I just didn't know how this, what this plan says.
This might be a good discussion item for a meeting Monday night.
I was just going to say, I think you've gone by a lot of this, 2020 has gone over a lot of the issues that are in here also, and I know the survey that you had out, and everybody's talked about so many of these different things, to me, it's kind of a combination, so if anybody'd like to look at my, my book here, I've got it.
I guess I feel that we need to get started on something, because I'm relatively new on the council, I guess I'm the newest one here, and I've been hearing about this master plan for parks for the last eight years, and you know what we've got? Just exactly what we had eight years ago. So I think, I ought to go on with the youngest time we did something.
Could we ask Matt to maybe in terms of our meeting Monday?
Yeah, let's talk about it then for a little bit too.
Okay. Just to have him on the same page as the rest.
Okay, well, there is a park of recreation item anyway, if we're doing that time.
Okay, let's try to talk Monday, and we'll, we'll make sure that Matt's available by phone letter, at least we'll find out, in case we have questions to him. Question?
Yes, I'm wondering, I didn't get a look at, if Matt included, or anybody's entertained that section of Angus Door State Park that was going to be a horse camp that came to a screeching halt, they built all those trails through the area, it's sitting there with campsites, ready to be used, and it's not going to be utilized at all.
Now, Wes, Wes was just focused on our parks in Hot Springs.
I'm scared.
Try to deal with it for a good part of it next week, and then we can just, and depending on what we do then, we can decide if we want it on the next agenda for some sort of action. Okay. Board of Equalization, it's probably beginning in mid-April, the last few years, I don't think they met last year, didn't have a need for cars here in the past, I need a volunteer again, I don't know if Carl would like to do it, Georgia has volunteered if, if we want to send her, we need one person. Anybody want to take some evenings off, it might be two or three evenings this year, can't tell.
It's actually in the afternoons.
Oh, it's an afternoon?
Yeah, the, the county commission holds them, and they usually hold them after their regular county commission meeting and/or special meetings as needed. Sometime between the 8th of April and the 29th of April is when the Board of Equalization has to complete their duties, the Consolidated Board of Equalization is what it's referred to.
So it's afternoon?
I would, I would recommend Georgia.
Do you do in afternoons?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if somebody else wants to, we'll just, we'll send Georgia in there. Okay?
The deadline for appeals is April 1st, so that's kind of an information item too, that anybody that wants to appeal their assessment, and I believe, according to the assessor, the assessment notices were just mailed, so you should all be getting them if you haven't already, and make sure you check them, and if you have any concerns, visit with them. And your appeal again needs to be made before April 1st, and at that time, they'll know how many days or how many meetings they're going to need, and, you know, if anybody from the city, last year, nobody from the city appealed anything, so they didn't need to meet with the, the city folks at all.
Great, thanks. Committee reports, would you have anything to add?
Yes. We met on, the Administrative and Promotion Committee met on February 26th. We had discussions on library funding and county budget, district tax fund did not pass in the, in the House or the, in the House or the Senate?
Just the Senate.
Just the Senate. So that's something that's going to be pushed off to another year. The health insurance for the employees of the city came up, and it was our recommendation that we just go forward with another year with Blue Cross Blue Shield, because we've got another 1.6% discount this year, and if we make any change, any type of a change to our policy, we could endure a 19% increase, and we don't want to do that. Personnel policy was on the agenda, but we didn't get to that, and Georgia and I are going to try and struggle through it some other time in the near future. We're having a, another item on the agenda was police department wages, we're struggling to fill positions at city level. We're having to, in the last year's, hire non-certified employees and get them trained, and I think if we can move forward with certified employees and pay them a little more to start, I think the city will be better off. The code of conduct was, was discussed, and it was discussed whether the citizens need to initiate the issue, and Jerry Baker presented tonight a code of conduct to the council, and it'll be taken up after next evening at the city. The golf course was on the agenda, the automated T system should be in use at this time, it was, it was supposed to be originated during the week of this meeting, the 26th, so it sure should be in our computer system now. I don't know what this other item was, but I think Cheyenne River Designs is, is doing a promotion to the plunge, to put in a hot springs-only rack, and they're doing it around the area, and all of these racks, these top, top line up here are going to be rented out for advertising, and the rest of it is rapid, or hot springs-only initiative and advertisement for the city only. And I guess they've got several different areas that they've got them already planned out for in the city of Hot Springs. So, but we wanted to have one at the plunge, and I think we're going to make that space available there. And that's all I had.
Okay, thanks Carl. Hope it works, Dwight? Just a second, Dwight.
I was going to record a little bit, sorry, on some of the activity at the plunge, because everybody knows that it's been closed now for two weeks, and they are on schedule. I just talked to Emily, and they've had 70, 80 hours of volunteers that have been donated, volunteer hours that have been donated, and they've had people from the public that have donated food and for lunch and snacks and stuff like that, and if anybody's interested in volunteering for food or anything like that, it's always welcome. If you can't come down and help, maybe help clean, but it's very interesting, if you've never seen the pool empty, it's, it's a great sight to see, and we're putting together a book to show the activity as it's progressing, so they have the carpet all up and the old cabinets out, and they're putting new cabinets in, and everything's being cleaned and painted, and they're going to town. So I, I think that's a positive thing for us to look at.
Thanks. I would like.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about the back of thumb that we, the council approved here a few weeks ago, and it was supposed to be in last week, did you get an update on that yet earlier? I didn't ask for it this morning anyway. So soon, soon on the back of the thumb.
I did on that, I phoned the guys today, and they were going to call today and find out for sure if it was in or not, they're supposed to have already found out by now.
Okay, thanks.
They were going to call today and find out.
We talked about the, the building demolitions that have to take place, and as soon as the weather permits, we're going to try and get on these. We pressed Tracy to get the water main bed packets out as soon as possible, as companies, at this time of year, companies are planning their summer seasons and fall seasons, and the sooner we have them out, I think the better prices will get on beds. We haven't set a time to go to Hill City yet to look at a piece of equipment for the sewer plant that they have in, that they're using now. We're getting a bid for water meters from Mark Hanson with HD, just to compare prices with Johnson Controls. And we talked with Verdine Auctions about possibly selling some of the excess city property along with the auction of the property that's going to be taking place out by the city well in Hot Brook Canyon. There's an easement issue there that we're currently working on, that's about all I can say on that for now. That's probably all I can say on that for now.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Dwight. Public safety, correct?
We did not have a meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
This will have one next Monday.
Next Monday.
Nine o'clock.
Okay. Cultural Recreation, what's the job, anything else?
We didn't have a meeting either, but Lyle was so gracious, he took a new job just, just so we could meet during the day now. So we're going to maybe start trying to meet by one o'clock in the afternoon, or, I, I got, I guess we're going to nail that down. I got to ask Lyle, so he's got, he's got to be able to sleep, so I got to figure out when it's going to work for him. But if we have these during the day now, maybe more of the department heads will be able to attend, and we can get a little more going.
He's working for the Sheriff's Department, he don't need to sleep.
Thanks, Wes. Harley?
Just want to make mention that today was the first day for nominating petitions for the four open council seats on the board, one from each ward, as well as the mayor. Don has publicly said that he will not be rerunning, so we will be looking at a new mayor come July. So petitions are available at City Hall, from the Secretary of State's office online. You're welcome to get them at any place you wish, as long as you notarize them and take the oath of circulation. They have to be returned by the twenty-fifth of March at 5:00 P.M. So any candidates that are willing to jump into the ring and join all of these fine folks up front, here's your opportunity to do so. That's everything I have.
Okay. Just remember, if you pick up petitions to run, we changed some of the ward boundaries three or so years ago, so some of the wards are a little bit different, so make sure you know which ward you're in when you pick up a petition. Last year, we had somebody pick up a petition because he thought he was still in his old ward, so make sure to change that.
Harley, you forgot to mention, if you're going to take out a petition, make sure he lives in the city.
They have to live in the city, that's right.
I know, we left, we get a little loose.
Well, it's strange that you say that, because just on the email today, they had three cities in South Dakota where they have somebody running that lives out of state that owns property in town, and so that truly does happen, so.
Okay, I have nothing else for the council tonight, we do have to go into executive settlement, legal and personnel, so I entertain a motion. Don, you have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.